Call the City Council Work Session to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson, Iguangeli. Vining.
Here.
Jermaine.
Here.
Lamore.
Here.
Felder.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Well, we have quite a few items on the agenda, and I know Mr. Pastu wants to get right to them, so I'm going to just turn it right over to him. He did send us an email with the work session items, which I'm sure he'll be reviewing. Thanks.
Your Honor, first item that we have tonight, I had sent it out in one of my updates a few weeks ago about Lake Erie Transit and the proposed project that involved the area that was previously occupied by the credit union. And in essence, it was a project that, you know, both city administrations supported along with Lake Erie Transit. And we kind of pulled back from that a little bit. And Patrick's got, you know, the layout of the project area, but if I could, I'm just going to start with, you know, part of the reasons why I think, you know, we're proceeding with this. One is Mr. Jagosinski had worked in securing some grant funds for it, and we need to give them some direction, whether this is a go or no-go, in order for them to potentially reappropriate the grant funds that he's secured for potential other projects. And, but in going through some of my rationale for support at the project, and talked with the past council about it, but, you know, one of the things that it would, the project would do is change some of the feel of City Hall. We have a City Hall that functions both for our existing customers that come here, but also there's a, it functions sometimes as a transit center where we have a lot of patrons from the transit using facilities here, waiting, you know, for their next bus transfer. The other thing is, the second is, that LET, through the grants, as I mentioned, would pay for the project, and even with some general building and site maintenance. We do have a surplus capacity here at City Hall. Certainly, we did a space analysis, and, you know, we think we can fit this within the project that we had. The credit union, previously, my understanding is, prior to the credit union occupying, served as kind of a community meeting room. And one of the things I really would like to, and we'll talk about it at our February 20th work session, is getting the council chamber project back on the table for consideration. But as we went through that, many of the things that we looked with the design was for it to function in that capacity, not only as a city council chambers, but a multipurpose use for not only council, but other community type of meetings. And then, from a security standpoint, there's a consideration with that, is at the end of the day, when we close it, our security area that would be tightened up to be limited to pretty much just the lobby area on the first floor, as well as the restrooms. And so, and then last, you know, we came up for some discussion about LET, you know, expressed some concerns about the first and Scott Street parking lot impacting some of their routes marginally, but also it pushed their, some of their patrons further from the destinations here in the downtown. You know, with that, just wanted to go through the reason for being here tonight, and some of my thoughts as to why I was supportive of it. And so, I'm not sure how we want to go through reviewing this again. Patrick, do you want to do a quick overview? And then Mark, if you don't mind, I'll just have you available for comments and questions.
Sure. I've been quietly tabbing through the five drawings here while you were talking.
Remind yourself?
But basically, this, and this is the, this is the plan view layout, so to speak, and there's a couple of, a couple of renderings here. It would have its own individual, like it incorporates a bus shelter area out here where patrons could wait and actually see the buses. But my understanding is that what was designed inside was a series of TV screens that would actually let people inside waiting know when their buses arrive, a lot of schedule things on there. It would, I'm going to go back to the top here. It actually has, incorporates its own set of restrooms, which is one of the common concerns, and something that could be added to for festivals, things like that, where we want to keep the building open beyond, but not have the entirety of the City Hall complex open. So that's one of the advantages, and that was one of the things that Lake Erie Transit wanted too, was so they could, again, not to necessarily segregate their patrons from City Hall employees, but because their hours are different than ours, it enables them to have, you know, have indoor access during the hours that we aren't necessarily open. So, and having kind of a one-stop shop there. And as Vince mentioned, and I'm going to try to tab up, I think the only view we've got is this one. You can kind of see where I'm waving this hand around. This actually shows you, because Kohler did the renderings for the council chambers renovation, you can actually see elements of that in this rendering here, where we've got it opened up. This wall to my right here would be opened up with glass, and you can actually see out into the plaza. So that's kind of already supposing that we go forward with that city council chambers project. So, basically, there'd be a walkway, and I think the next slideshow's a little bit, that would be the exterior. Looks fairly similar to what we have out there now, except with the dressed-up bus shelter that's actually connected through to the building. And you can see that here, where there's a walkway, a covered walkway to a new entrance into the side, which would be uniquely theirs. And so, of course, the City Hall main entrance is over here to the right, out of frame. That's what it would look like from the city county plaza area. You can see the walkway going up. So you'd be cutting into that landscape area that's there now, and that's not terribly heavily used, but most of the major architectural elements, like the sign, the flagpole, those would all remain as they are now. Probably leave it at that, because I think that's a fairly good summary of it, but I'll leave, turn it over to Mark, and he can tab through any of these photos as he likes, so.
Good evening. My name's Mark Jagosinski. I'm the general manager of Lake Erie Transit. With me tonight is the chairman of the Lake Erie Transportation Commission, Mr. Joseph Leibig. Couple of things I'd like to point out is that when this idea was first brought up, it, we met with a lot of positive reaction from the Lake Erie Transportation Board. So we have, all of our board members are very interested in trying to make this happen. One of the issues certainly is the money, and we were able to re-scope some grants that we have lined up for facility renovation and some rehabbing of some projects at our current facility, that we were able to move to this project. It's just that we need to have a decision as soon as possible in order to move forward. We have pressure from the FTA that they want a decision as to what we're going to do with the money. The money is in grants that we currently have allocated to Lake Erie Transit, so we're not actually looking for an award of another grant. The grants are already there. We just had to re-scope the, or change the scope on those in order to make it happen. The advantage certainly to City Hall, having this transfer station or indoor waiting area, I think, works into the program that we've been working on, which is community pride and being part of the community. The bus system is part of the community. We've done a lot in the community, and we still do a lot of different things. This, I think, is just another step for us being a part, a more visible part of the city of Monroe. I think it shows the pride that we have in being the transit system here. And you can go back and look at the wrap buses that we have that also promote community pride. This has been a good effort on our part, and I think in getting the message out that we want to be part of the community. The transfer station does allow certainly a few things. Here, you know, you look at how cold it is outside today, certainly we would be able to have a area where the passengers would go in and wait for the bus instead of waiting outside. And certainly during the summer, when it's hot, we certainly would provide air conditioning. The other advantage is certainly the restrooms are there. Our intent with those restrooms would be that not only are they there for our passengers and our drivers, but also to be used during community events that the city has, that we could open it up and close the facility up. One of the things that is important to Lake Erie Transit is, we like the visibility that we have right now with where the transfer point happens, right here at, out front of City Hall. It actually, I think, makes us a noticeable partner in the downtown area. We've looked at other areas for transfer points, and we run into a lot of different issues in doing that. And currently, we like where we're at. It would be difficult, I think, at this point, to move the transfer point somewhere else, even if we go one block one way or one block another way. The more we go out away from downtown, the more problematic it becomes. You know, there's a lot with the routes, and I don't know, did you bring up the?
Yeah, one of the PDFs that I gave, you can read them.
The route structure that we have is somewhat a congested fixed route structure in the city of Monroe, and it terminates here, basically at City Hall. Yes, that's it. And you can see that every route that we have actually filters into this point. We also have two dioride routes that actually meet at this point. So, moving the route structure a block one way or the other actually would have an accordion effect throughout the rest of the fixed route system and trying to move things, and would make it more costly to operate. We ran it through some software that we have, and we're looking at, if we move one block east at all, we're looking at a $35,000 to $40,000 additional cost to Lake Erie Transit to run the routes as you see them there, but one more block east. So there is a lot of difficulty in how the routes are affected if we move them. So we're not a fan of moving them, but again, you know, we'll work with the city any way we can. If that's something that you feel that's absolutely necessary, then I guess we don't have a choice. But this project is your project. We're happy to be a part of it if we can pull it off, but certainly our goal would be to have an indoor waiting area for our passengers, for our drivers, and then anybody else when it's open. Questions from anybody?
I have a question. And then, Patrick, you can go back to the other slide, that one right there. So a question I have, and I know we've gone, well, this was coming along, we're also having discussions on the reconfiguration of City Hall, and we talked about seat chambers, but as I notice now, if we're not shifting the clerk's office, the hallway and the windows are being, are part of this project. So I'm looking to what might be the alternative for the clerk's access, and then, and then, so that was the question, because it uses, goes right up to where the windows currently are, and I understand that part. And we still have access through the clerk's office to those other areas in the stairwell. So I'm trying to think more mobility internally versus Lake Erie Transit. So that's not my question. I don't know if we've looked at that, what's the alternative on that configuration for the clerk's office?
Yeah, we would have to go back, since we're not looking at pursuing that right now, the reconfiguration of a lot of the offices on the first floor. We would have to probably push more of that up toward where the counter spaces, and particularly in the clerk's area with that. And I think we had three spaces, three counter locations, and so we would have to look at how we could reconfigure that by closing those windows that are currently served by the treasury function.
Yeah, and I know, see Kohler's design here was for that space. I didn't know if there's other ways to look at that as well, if the hallway was open. So, but that was my only question on the design.
Yeah, your honor, I would have grave concerns about completely eliminating the treasurer's counter and having them sharing it with the clerk's counter, especially at tax election time when both are happening simultaneously. So I'll be interested in seeing drawings.
Yeah. That's, that was really my only question I had.
And I think one of the things that, that we're interested in is trying to have the restrooms as large as we can have them on the footprint that we're dealing with. So certainly that's something, you know, we can work with the city on in that, but our goal would try and keep the restrooms, one way or another, as large as they are in the design here.
And I also, as I recall from the conversation before, the entrance way and having the space if it's day like today, that there's those that are waiting, have the space inside, and yet still making time for the restrooms. I understand that. Just trying to think how that might work. John?
I've got a couple of questions, your honor. I have several occasions, when this has been presented, I have pretty much opposed the transfer station inside City Hall, primarily because I feel that the first floor of City Hall, that there's a higher and better use than a transfer station. And a transfer station in its simplest components is a lobby, and it's a restroom. I just, one of the things that concerns me is that a week ago Saturday, we had a strategic planning meeting here at City Hall on the third floor, started at 8:30, got done at 2:30. During that time, the first floor of City Hall was open, because we have to have it open because of Access for the Open Meetings Act. Yet there was no one in the, down on the first floor. To me, that's a security issue. This area in City Hall used to be set up as a large conference room. Many of the committees, the Planning Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Historic District Commission, all of them met in that room on the first floor. There was no third floor going to the third floor. That was used, that was used for a training facility. The council chamber, which is now a large conference room, many times, some of the committees in there, they squeeze in there, Downtown Development Authority meets in there. There's a couch that'll accommodate maybe three people if we have a group of people that come. I really believe that the city should use the former committee room, the current vacant credit union. We should use that as a, as a committee and commission chamber, a committee chamber that's got the SMARTboard in it that all of our committees can use, it's on the first floor, it's much more secure, it's much more safe, and it, to me, that's a symbol of open engagement for the community when the meeting facilities are all on the first floor. So that's, that's the concern that I have about the transfer station here. Now, I have more of a planning concern in terms of, I had sent, I believe I sent an article over to the city manager a month ago that was in Governance, Governing Magazine, where a couple of communities in the state of Ohio, I think Columbus was one of them, that had fixed route systems, had not evaluated their fixed routes probably for 15 years. And then when they finally went through the analysis and looking at fixed routes, they determined that their fixed routes were totally in the wrong locations based on how things have changed. For example, grocery stores have come and gone. Farmer Jack's is now a rehab center. ProMedica is going to move out on Dixie Highway. So we have a lot of uses that are within the area. I know that when the transfer station started here a number of years ago, social security was on the third floor. Social Security, DHS, MCOOP, all of the social service agencies are over on South Telegraph Road. So has there been a, an assessment of the fixed route system, and has there been any relative to other changes that have occurred, both institutionally and commercially, within the Monroe area?
There's not been a full assessment of the fixed route, but all those changes that have happened in the city of Monroe or in nearby areas, we've adjusted to. We do adjust the routes when we have major destinations change, and we try and accommodate those destinations the best we can. So we do adjust the route. We are now just beginning to look at what's going to happen with the ProMedica hospital being built, and what route changes are going to be required there. Right now, the initial thinking is that we're going to have to add another route to the fixed route system and go from there. But overall, as far as what we currently serve, I think the overall footprint, I don't see changing a whole lot, but there are certainly parts of each route that are probably going to get tweaked here and there as things develop.
Your honor, I don't have an issue with having a transfer station in the downtown area. My, I guess personally, my, my concern is having it inside City Hall, where I think we could utilize that space much more efficiently for city operations and for our committees and our commissions that are really squeezed for room, and have it on the first floor, which is much more safe and secure than on the third floor, which isn't. So.
I can just follow up on the one item. And again, I agree with you from a security standpoint, it's better to have everything here on the first floor. My thought would be, when we do renovate the council chambers, which we'll talk about at the next meeting, it'll serve multipurpose, not only as city council, but certainly you can configure it so that various boards and committees and community groups can meet in here, and you've got it, you know, and certainly as, as Patrick had shown, you know, you'll have a good view of the lobby area or the area outside there of City Hall. So it'll take on a different, very similar, some of the features that it had before with the conference room there before occupied by the credit union. The only other city operation, I think, that you could conceivably put in there would make some sense, and I'm not sure if it's big enough, would be Parks and Rec. Certainly when they get through their registration period, it's not the most convenient piece for, for the patrons to come in and go up to the second floor, although we're looking out at the arena as a potential location for them as well. But, but I do agree that the security end of it is important, and if, when we renovate this here, that we can have that function from a multipurpose standpoint.
Another question, your honor, has, I see Annette here is in the audience. We're in the process of going through a downtown master plan, has the idea of a transfer station in the downtown at an, at an alternate or optional locations, has that been evaluated as part of the downtown master plan?
I'll take a stab at that. So I have been in contact with the planning consultant who is working on the downtown master plan, which is MKSK, and we've supplied some additional information to them regarding this proposal and how the transportation interfaces with the rest of the context of the plan. But there are no known conclusions at this point in time. I suspect over the next four to six weeks, we will find out more from them about how such a transfer station could interface in another location, but it hasn't been brought forward at this point in time.
Other questions?
Your honor.
Kelly?
Well, I don't know if everybody knows, but the original transfer point was a little further west, and then I don't know how that request came to have it pushed east, and then now we're looking at having it pushed further east, and I think it's important that we have a transfer station in the downtown area. Personally, I have been and still occasionally am a bus rider, so I can completely appreciate the convenience, the heat, the, you know, the bathrooms and all of that. And personally, I think it's a great idea. I hope we are able to push it through.
The one thing I'd like to add is that certainly over the past several years, since we've been here right outside City Hall, that is the most welcomed spot we've been at ever. Anytime we've looked at moving any part of the transit service anywhere, we meet with a lot of resistance. But since we've been here in front of City Hall, it's been the, I guess, the best relationship that we've had, and the least amount of complaints that we've had. So where we're at right now works very well. If we start looking at other areas around downtown, I suspect that we will meet with a lot of resistance.
Right.
Your honor, I just had a couple of questions, just one question, actually, just basically the funding. You mentioned that there was grants, that LET has been awarded already, and this is basically how you plan on funding this here, or are you looking for other city funds as well?
No, we're not looking for any city funds. The only thing that is required by the FTA, the Federal Transit Administration, is that we would have to have a 25-year lease agreement in place in order to spend the federal dollars on developing that site.
Thank you.
Counsel? See, Vince, anything further?
If, you know, Vince, as I started off, we need to give LET some direction, you know, I might just put it on the council for action here at the next meeting on the 20th. Is there anything else that you might need to help with that decision going forward?
I guess my, my biggest concern is what I see is on the floor, plan for the access to the clerk's office as it currently, because that's not going to change. And then, and if that doesn't change, then how do we, how do those that need to be get through the clerk's office to access the mechanical rooms and the power shut-offs that we know are there in the stairwell? So that might need to be tweaked if it stays as is. That would be my, that's my main concern. John?
Yeah, the other concern I had, and I addressed it last time, and the architect didn't have a definitive answer, is that where you have restrooms, you have soil pipes, and those soil pipes have to go right through the second and third floor. They're going to go right through where Jody and Mark's office is at, and they're going to go right up into the third floor out to the roof. So there's going to be disruption on the second and third floor as well for the, for these modifications.
Thanks, John. I know that was, that was kind of discussed at the original meeting, and I think that's something that probably has to come with that design as it currently sits, or with the modification if that hallway needs to be opened up as it currently is. And how does that work? And that's probably what I look at, some of this part of it. John, thanks. So I think as that comes forward, and if they can get that information, and then submit back to the council for consideration or further dialogue.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Vince, next item.
Next item is to discussion with Annette Noel and Loretta LaPointe regarding DNR recreation grants, the schedule, and also a little bit of a strategy. And so, you know, we're looking at some of the grant programs that are available, and we probably need to develop a plan with, going forward, how we want to, if you will, just grant plan for the projects that we think would serve the biggest impact. And so, while Loretta's handing that out, I'm going to let Annette get rolling with the start of her presentation and...
Well, thank you for inviting us to be here this evening. Really, we just wanted to go over, review three items regarding approach for grant applications through the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Recreation Grant Programs this evening. So we're going to describe the grant opportunities that exist through the MDNR, talk a little bit about some of the grant-eligible projects that are available, or that the city has on potential project list, and then to, third step is to discuss the approach that we'd like to use this year for grant applications. So primarily, there are four recreation programs available through the MDNR that we are looking at at this point in time, three of which would be applicable to some of the projects that are in the hopper, so to speak, for the city of Monroe. The fourth program deals with pumpouts for private boats, and we're, there's nothing within the plans right now that would require a grant of that nature. So there are three larger ones. One is the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, which requires a 25% match, can be used for acquisition of land or development of land. The minimum grant would be $15,000, the maximum grant would be $300,000 for development side of it. There is no match for acquisition. So if there's a project at some point in the future where the city would need to acquire property to develop park space, for example, there is no match for the acquisition. And again, private land is not eligible, so the city would have to acquire through lease, or purchase, or donation property in order to apply for that grant. Land and Water Conservation Fund is a 50% match, development of outdoor recreation. There are additional requirements related to land and water that I didn't list here. The minimum is $30,000, the maximum is $300,000, and again, private land is not eligible. And the third type that we were looking at is the Recreation Passport, which is a relatively newer program in relation to the other two, requires a minimum match of 25%, can be used for development of indoor or outdoor recreation, and I wanted to make sure that we understood that distinction, that there are some indoor opportunities for that. The minimum grant amount is $7,500, the maximum is $150,000, and that may be used on private or public land. The private land must have a, be encumbered by a lease agreement for a minimum amount of years. So in looking at some of the grant-eligible projects, we were looking at affordability of some of the projects, and Loretta will go into that in just one moment. Phasing, meaning can the plans that are available through parks and recreation be phased so that the grants can, grants can be applied for where it makes the most sense, especially when it comes to sequencing other improvements at other parks? And then, of course, matching funds is a big component. All of the grants available to the city do require matching funds, and some of the projects were a little large in scope. funds. And some of the projects were a little large in scope, and we didn't feel that the grant amount, even if fully awarded to the, to that maximum allowable amount, would give enough funding to move that project forward. So we were looking at primarily three, three projects that were included in the most recent review of the Recre Parks Program that were previewed earlier in the spring, and those were St. Mary's Park, Father Carnes Park, and Mill Race Park. I think there were six, if I'm correct, Loretta, parks in that plan, but we were focusing on these three. So right off the bat, we decided to defer an application for the Natural Resources Trust Fund for St. Mary's Park. And the reasons behind that were larger cost of the project that is fully designed. That one has about, almost a $3 million price tag and with a match of only $300,000 with the Natural Resources Trust Fund. There's a significant financial hurdle that has to be overcome there. Again, the Resources Trust Fund does have the largest max, gives you time to package the matching funds. And another consideration with the Resources Trust Fund is that there is a point system. So there are fewer points awarded the more frequently you are successful in applying for that particular grant. And given that the city had a very substantial award in 2014, we thought it would be best to wait a little bit more time until an application package could be put together that would encompass a larger project, but also allow the city to get the fullest points available for that project in, in the case that there was already a larger grant supplied to that again. And then, the second decision was to defer Father Carnes Park. And I'm going to let Loretta talk a little bit about why, why that has been chosen as an option.
Honorable mayor and counsel, if you look at your maps for Carnes, in a perfect world, if we had a pot of money and we could do every plan in its entirety, then I would certainly put different things in order. If we're trying to get the most we can with the least amount of funds to at least start chunks, then I would probably go on a reduced diet sort of a, a plan. But if you look at the Carnes Park, the sand volleyball courts on the far left side, they already exist at Munson, and the front section of Munson probably will not be done immediately because there are some rotary additions, the playscape, the shelter, which are still in pretty good use. So the sand volleyball courts are already existing. We have eight pickleball courts that would be coming in. And currently, at Manor Park, we converted an old tennis court to have four pickleball courts. And so then, since we're a winter climate, people are using those half the year, and they're certainly not maxed out yet. So we, we are, we do have some place for pickleball people to play. Once you would put in the pickleball, you'd really need to go for the parking lot as well. So that would not be a standalone. And we have, the last thing that, among the courts at Carnes are the tennis courts. And we, we do have an adequate number of tennis courts already, even if we were to lose St. Mary's, because St. Mary's are two courts. And when all the plans will be done, we'll have three less tennis courts in the city. So we're good with tennis courts, and there is an existing play structure there. So although I love Carnes Park, is it the one we have to do first? Probably not, because there are these existing amenities already in place. Anyone have any questions about Father Carnes?
No.
So that leaves Mill Race Park. And that's what we're going to intend to focus on for the Recreation Passport Grant for 2018. There was also, I invite you to, or call attention to the Mill Race Plan that was provided to you with the Father Carnes Plan. And given the budget that has been established for park programming, along with the funding potential match available through the Recreation Passport Program, we're going to phase the improvements, or project to phase the improvements at Mill Race Park, focusing on the kayak and canoe launch with a paved loop and entry. So on the plan that you were provided, you'll see that the parking lot is a paved surface. And the intention is to not pave the parking lot portion, but to keep it compacted gravel parking area, including the park signage and some of the pathways that were included in the concept phase. The challenge that we have with this particular grant is that they wait extra for improvements that are, comply with universal design standards, which has to do with accessibility for handicapped and other folks at the parks. And so, we need to remain mindful that, again, in order to make sure that our project that we submit has the highest point ranking available, we, there are requirements for paving in the handicap parking areas and access to the facility. So those will have to be done in conjunction with this, this grant program. As it stands now, this is a very high-level estimate. The project cost, we're looking at about $360,000 with a new allowable amount of 150. That is, if the grant is fully funded, we can always apply for the grant, and they could say, we love your project, but because of demand with other institutions that have also applied for grants, you might only get 100,000 for it. So we're planning to be successful, but mindful that the grant amount that we request could be, be lesser. And then, the match from the city would be 210,000, which is far above the 25% minimum requirement, but that is largely to do with, with the whole, with the entire project cost. Does anyone have any questions about that? Because this is really the important part of the, of the discussion for tonight.
What, can you share with me the strategy of why you're recommending to go with Passport Grant instead of the Trust Fund Development Grant, which has a maximum grant amount of $300,000?
So, there are improvements to St. Mary's Park that I think are in, if I'm understanding correctly, Vince, you can help me out here anytime you want, that the intention would be to reserve the opportunity for the Natural Resources Trust Fund for St. Mary's Park. And that might be a year from now, or two years from now when we apply for that. But again, the concern was because the city received a substantial grant from the Natural Resources Trust Fund in 2014, that we want to make sure that we're getting a most impactful project to use for the program that has the most significant match. And so, the idea was to use something that is on the lower scale for a smaller-scale project, which Mill Race is, but save the larger potential for the project that has the larger price tag.
Okay.
Okay.
Have you taken a look, last time I looked at Recreation Passport Grant recipients, very few of them scored, very few of them got $150,000. They were all in the $40,000 and $50,000 range.
Yeah. Loretta and I just happened to attend the training session on Friday for this, and the previous grants, I had the same concern. I actually had to revise the slides this morning because the same concern we had. I reviewed the awarded grants for last year, and it looked like there was a substantial amount of them at $75,000. But the match last year was $75,000. So they've doubled the opportunity to, to get a higher amount for that grant this year. It's new this year that there's $150,000 max.
Oh?
I just have one question. If we choose to go with the Mill Race Park, is anything going to be done with Carnes? As far, I mean, it does need a little attention.
I assume you're talking about, you know, some of the things that are not working anymore. There's an old basketball court. We can still keep, you know, continue to tear out things that aren't working. We're probably still going to need the ball diamond because we're losing the Hellenberg ball diamond, and we need usually one extra location beyond what we already have. So the playscape, we have dug out all the wood chips and put all new ones, so that that's coming back up. And then, we're trying to keep the ball diamond in good enough shape as long as we can. So we, we could rip out some of those other things to at least create a lawn.
Good.
More attractive.
Yes.
Questions from counsel? Michelle?
What did you say we would have to match for this park? The amount of dollar amount? We got that nearly $60,000?
The Mill Race Park?
Yes.
For Mill Race, the maximum, for the Recreation Passport, the maximum allowable grant is 150. So if the project comes in at 360, 360,000, the city's contribution is 210. And I believe, Vince, correct me if I'm wrong, but the allocation for the park programming is 250 per year?
Yeah, I was gonna...
At least that's what you're projecting.
Yeah, we, in putting together the CIP, we were looking at allocating during each of the fiscal years, during the five years, there 250,000 toward park improvements. And so, this would fit into, you know, the appropriation for 18, 19. And then, certainly, when you get to St. Mary's, that one, and I think, you know, in talking with Annette, as much as the resources that we can find to contribute toward that significant undertaking, you know, I think the highest and best use maybe for the 300 would be the St. Mary's project.
Your Honor, I have a quick question. I think the, the service provided here that does not seem to be provided by any of the other parks in our, in our city at this time is, is the boat launch. Do we anticipate that any improvements will need to be made on the river itself to make that viable for kayaks and canoes, or is it good to go now? I'm, I'm thinking here with the dams.
I think design-related is her question. Well, that's an excellent question, because one of the things we really need to do is just recognize that the river is what the river is. And it's very low in the summer. It's very high in the spring. So I was speaking with, with Annette, sorry, Janice, I was speaking with Annette, that we really definitely have got to start putting really large interpretive signs along with things like the canoe and kayak launch, because you can come in now and you could put your canoe or kayak in upriver and go downriver, but they need to know when they put it in at Mill Race that this is not a beginner course or a family course.
Right.
And that then it would say the things you should be looking at, so that you could determine before you ever put your boat in, that you know what you're doing, and you're safe, and your family's safe. Because we want to celebrate the fact that the river is what it is. It's never going to be, you know, if you went down to Hellenberg, you can put your canoe and kayak in, and it's more of a mill pond. You know, it's, it's not as rushing if you're over to the side. But you also have to be aware there that you could quickly come upon the Turning Basin, which is very deep. So our, our river does need to be signed really well. These are the risks. These are, these are your adventures, you know, so that they do know you're going to portage in the middle of July. But last year, I think at one of the concerts, I was sitting and I saw a guy in a kayak coming. And then, he went behind the ban shell, and I saw the kayak go on without, and then I saw the guy walking, and people running to get his kayak. It does, it does travel fast when, when it's high. So we need to make sure that it's really clear.
In the summer, when it would get the most use. It is, most of the river's walkable.
It certainly is. And then, we would have to tell them what to, what to expect with the new rock rapids, that you will have to be careful, you know, you'll have to portage, you'll have to go around. Or if you want to risk it, that's great. But you, then you know what you're doing.
Was some small discussion about portage, I think, in the discussions last Saturday. I don't know if anything came of it. But, and then just liability, would there be any additional liability taken on by the city if we put this in?
That would probably be a great question for our friend Matt.
Bud?
I would say there's always going to be risk. That's something we'd want to talk about with our risk carrier in terms of insurance and what they would expect if you said boat launch, you said River Race, and if they want to come and take a look at that. But also, I mean, you've always got governmental immunity also that would be a defense to claim. So we'd want to obviously evaluate that in light of all those issues.
I could see a brochure as well, you know, that states that this is our canoe and kayak launch, and this is the level of kayaker you should be. And if you have family, you might want to, you know, consider pickleball.
So?
Speaking of boat launch, does that have to be ADA compliant as well?
This one will. They're pretty cool, too. I mean, it's really not just helpful for ADA, but, you know, you, you kind of come up on a ramp, and you can pull yourself, and then you can, you can get out, which is a lot safer to enter and exit than just trying to get in from a shore. So this would be ADA compliant, absolutely.
Like a floating?
It'd probably be like a T-doc that, you know, you kind of go out, and then there's transfer points, and then your kayak pulls up parallel to the shore. You can put it down on rollers, then you would hop in, and then you can pull yourself along the rails off.
So I'll just, a couple of comments. You know, we've had the parks planned, there's six parks, and we have all the plans for this year moving forward on Labor Park, which I think council has recognized to be a priority with all that else is going on there. When I first looked at all the parks, and Mill Race wasn't the highest on my list, but as it's, as you start kind of working through the process of what can you do now, I mean, obviously, you look at Carnes, and you look at Mill Race, and they're pretty much a blank slate. There's not much there that's functioning currently. One's a field. And so, it obviously looks to me it's easier to develop that along with the revenue that becomes available, whatever grant is used, and the recreation grant. And then, thank you for the numbers, because it gives us the idea of what the cost match would be. But with that, as we move forward, that's kind of where I start to think, is council will have to have some discussion, is what's the next park? And we can look at the grants, where the grants come from, but also if you're removing things and haven't put them in, because that's kind of some of the things being removed from St. Mary's Park, is destined or designed for Father Carnes. I think we'd want to put something in before it was removed. I think that's a longer discussion the council will have to look at. And I appreciate the foresight of looking at this grant and other grants and how they may come forward. But then, we also have to look at, you know, what's, not just what their availability and the amount, but how do we make them serviceable for the city and the residents as well. So I look forward to that discussion, is what comes after Mill Race if this moves forward, because I think that's going to be a bigger discussion, because it's a bigger price for either one of them as well. And I think that's got to also, must be a consideration as we go forward. So appreciate the presentation.
And just to conclude, I just wanted to discuss, just very briefly, the timeline, because there is a significant time for evaluation by the MDNR staff for this particular program, all of their programs, actually. This is actually, the Passport Program is probably one of their more quick. The other ones require an appropriation by the state legislature, and this one does not. So we're applying for a grant with an application deadline of April 1. You will be asked to pass a resolution of authorization, which will come to you either later this month or into the month of March. I'm hoping to have a plan tweaked and prepared a little bit more so that we can present it all at once in accordance with the grant guidelines. So the, the valuation by the MDNR staff actually starts in April, and they have a sequence of events. I collapsed it all into one, one bullet point here, but they do have several steps in their evaluation process, including review, site visits, scoring, and an opportunity to supply more information if your application, while they are reviewing it, is deemed incomplete. So the approval won't come until December. So once all the applications are received, the DNR staff takes several months to review, and then we won't find out. We'll probably find out around November if our score, our scoring is high, how high the scoring is. But we won't get a funding commitment until December, at which point they would initiate an official agreement with the city. So I'm, we're going to aim for success, but there's a lot of steps along the way.
Well, the significant part of this is, you know, we got to make a decision, because even the MDNR, MDNR, yeah, grant for Recreation Grant, both of them are due April 1. And so we got this in front of the council, so we can get some feedback whether we go with the Passport Program for 150 or, or 300 for the, for the other, with the understanding why we're recommending to at least hold off for another year in that, that application.
Right. I would say that for a trust fund grant, given that there is a, a notice of award in December, but it takes several months for the state legislature to act on the approvals for the trust fund, that you're probably about six months, five to six months after, later, using that program than this particular program, which if this were the, the granting source that was approved, you're likely to start being able to work on the specifications for construction shortly after the New Year, whereas with the trust fund grant, you're looking at spring to summer before those actually are able to start. It's very explicit within the grant guidelines that there is no work to be started on any... It's very explicit within the grant guidelines that there is no work to be started on any of these projects. You assume the risk and the entire cost for anything that you start before the time the grant is awarded. So we just need to be careful with that.
Just a last comment, 'cause I, and I know that Councilman Felder, we're able to attend the TMA COG meeting, there was a discussion about water and water quality and water runoff, and I heard the comment, and I agree, wanna make sure it's accessible to all the public, ADA compliant, pavement and all that, but the trend and the movement away from making hard surface pavement because of runoff and those things, and I wonder if there's options out there or funding available, if it's not a full paved, some, uh, concrete-type entrance when you talk about Mill Race and making it more natural. The example they use, maybe because it's private, it doesn't matter versus here in public, but, you know, the football stadiums that build these massive parking lots with cement and they use it, you know, just a couple, few months of the year. And, and I think about that also in this relation when costs could be lessened, but still have to be accommodating for all uses. I don't know if there's options out there, I just throw it out because we just heard that and I thought it was an interesting concept of where some of the communities are going to as far as the type of surfaces they're putting in. So just a thought. We'll continue, I guess. Vince?
Thank you. Next item is just a, kind of a brief discussion with some of the challenges that city engineer Patrick Lewis has been dealing with regarding First and Front Street, particularly Front First Street with the design for the project that we have programmed for the upcoming year, and particularly at the triangle with Front, but there's also a couple of other areas with sidewalks that we have to address because of, for ADA compliance. So I'll let Patrick run and get it rolling.
I'll make it as fast as I can. Honorable mayor and council, Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. Hate to bring all of our design challenges, but what I presented back at the CIP workshop a month ago is what we were hoping was gonna be largely mill and fill jobs turned into something a little more pronounced than that. I've met with MDOT's local agency program staff, and as you know, we were about a three month window off from where we are today for the July bid letting, and we're just about on schedule for that. We were hoping to do a little bit better. So we're probably looking at construction September, October, November. Unfortunately, that's just with their lead time. What we're starting to run into here is when we were, even though we were specifically exempted in the streetscape project in 2001, which incidentally is why Lake Area Transit moved down to City Hall, as we were displacing them when we put the bump outs in back then, we built it with brick pavers, and I'll show you an example here in just a minute, brick pavers all the way from curb to building at the intersection corners, and those are creating a problem for us now when it comes to ADA compliance, in that we need to replace some of those for compliance, and then where do you stop? So we're having some challenges with the ADA compliance, and then we've got the brick concrete sidewalk layout. And I'm gonna show you a couple of examples of what we're doing today with the quote "new" pattern, that's a lot more ADA friendly and compliant. The other thing that we've run into, and I thought I could get this by the local agency programs, is when MDOT came through and resurfaced Monroe Street in 2014, they should have made these changes at the corners of Monroe and First, and they did not. So I asked the question, okay, what do I have to do with this project? And their reviewer, who was in a different agency within MDOT, says, well, you have to make them compliant, it's a condition of federal funds. So of course, then I'm jumping up and down saying, why didn't you make MDOT themselves do it when you resurfaced this three years ago? And they could not give me a good answer. But bottom line is, if we're gonna get this through with federal funds, we have to make those modifications at Monroe Street as well. One of the challenges we're coming up to now is that because we're wanting to do some base work with the brick pavers only a couple inches below the pavement surface in some areas, they're now triggering SHPO review, which is State Historic Preservation Office. So that's adding to the lead time. And now that MDOT is making us fix the ramps that they didn't fix in 2014, we also need to get a trunk line permit from them to approve doing the ramps that they didn't do. So what we're also finding out is that one of the ramps on the north side, where we have a mid-block crosswalk at Gateway Park, which is the park in between the triangle of Front and First, also has a brick area that dates back to 1984. So we're coming up with a whole lot more scope here than we started with. So I can give you a couple of examples. This is one of the corners at Cass and First Street, and even though we put the brick paver detail down 17 years ago, we're starting to see some heaving. It's, it's bricks on an asphalt setting bed with a four-inch concrete base underneath. And the difficulty we have here, and you can see sort of the sweeping wide single ramp here, is we've got a catch basin in here that's not compliant because it doesn't have the right grate, and the curb lip is a little more than it should be, as well as, of course, the bricks themselves being out of place more than a quarter inch, which, again, requires us to fix those. We were specifically exempted in our ADA lawsuit from that, that was settled in 2004. We got an exemption for the streetscape project in place, so as long as we don't touch it, we're still okay. But if we're gonna use federal funds on First Street, MDOT's requiring us to modify the ramps. So we're kind of in a catch 22 here. What we're proposing to do is the design up here in the upper left, that's a, that's a CAD file of what we're, what we're planning. Please note, Cass Street's a wider intersection than this, but we just chopped it off to squeeze it together. What we started doing downtown in the other areas where we were starting to replace the 82 and 1984, 1982 and 1984 sections of the streetscape, is instead of going brick all the way, this entire area, like you can see in the photographs above, you know, where we go from, from building all the way to curb, in these areas, we delineated accessible routes in concrete, and then the remaining areas were in, and I know Councilman Mike Longjly's gonna freak out, but don't worry, we're talking about bricks here, but we replaced those with stamped concrete. So we're proposing to, there's enough bricks that are in good shape and salvageable that we're gonna, we would propose to go to the same pattern we did in the other areas, except we would salvage the bricks, recast the concrete base underneath those and put brick in. Now, the alternative to that, which the city manager and I have discussed is, the question is, do the bricks actually do much for you aesthetically? Because by the time you get those ADA routes delineated in, in standard gray concrete with the detectable warnings, those truncated domes, those little bumps at the bottom, you start to, you don't have very much area left in brick. You're, you're under half, probably closer to a third left at most of the corners. So an alternate that you could consider is we just go to standard, standard concrete all the way across and call it a day. Right now, we've got it designed with the pattern you see up here on the left, with the bricks forming kind of a decorative accent. The other issue we have with Gateway Park, and we've asked our landscape architect that was selected, and they'll be bringing a proposal in the next couple of weeks for, and I think I was out in the hallway, but probably Annette mentioned it, with one of the other projects, Labor Park, we'll be asking for a contract for design with them, is we asked them to throw together, Russell Design, a quick sketch here for Gateway Park, because you can see this is, this is in even worse shape. The photo on the upper right, let's see where the cursor is here, you've got a ridge coming through here where that just kinda drops off, you've got bricks missing in various spots, the bottom of this mid-block ramp that goes across to the seed plumbing and heating building there, that's all cold patched at the bottom. Tree grates are becoming a trip hazard. We're starting to wonder if it wouldn't, if, if less is more at this intersection, so the proposed plan that we had them just sketch up real quick to show the council, and I can pass this, email this out to everyone, would show some simplified area, replacing the bricks here with just standard concrete, increasing the size of, of the landscape area, actually taking the nose of that, which is presently in concrete, turning this into a landscape area, so that you just have a, a simple sidewalk perimeter around here to keep the salt from splashing into that landscape area. So again, we're taking the philosophy less is more and focusing a little bit on some, easier maintenance landscaping in this area. The reason we're bringing this up now is because it connects to the First Street project, and it's going back to these photos in here. Where do you stop? This is the First Street side. I think for the purposes of plan development, we're just gonna show it, this all being removed and replaced with concrete here with some landscape area or some lawn area there, take these tree grates out and just leave them out while we figure out what's gonna happen with the rest of this. But you can see on the sign, there's deteriorated concrete around here, so we're, probably will work with whatever the contractor, whatever contractor we get on the street or on the roadway project with First Street, probably work with them directly to just add this into their scope of work. But I can't fund this as part of the federal job because it wasn't scoped originally, just whatever I'd need to do to make these walkable and ADA compliant. So unfortunately, this three-block project's turning into something that's a lot more than we anticipated, and we wanted to present those design concepts to the council for your feedback, so if there were any, any major concerns about the direction we're heading, you could let us know before we have to turn these in. And I do have to turn these in, at least the first draft for grade inspection by Monday of next week, so I'll leave it there, see if there's any questions.
And we do throw it out there for council feedback on it, because once you start some pretty significant, if you go back a couple of slides there, where you start taking some of the brick pavers out, and, and that, the last one was better. Yeah. You know, at what point does the, what do you gain from an aesthetic standpoint in delineating the area with the brick pavers? And, you know, I like brick pavers, but I also think, you know, sometimes concrete can be just as functional, in particular in downtown, and, you know, focus some of the aesthetic qualities, you know, in more of a pattern. But it is a substantial break from what we got, and before proceeding too far with it, we wanted to throw it out for comments, so.
Comments? Don?
I'll have some comments. I think, Patrick, we've been through the stamped concrete issue before. Stamp concrete is, if we're, if we're gonna, if you're gonna remove brick, just my, my personal preference is just go with regular concrete, not stamped concrete.
That's what we're planning.
Stamp concrete is not consistent with the Secretary of Interior guidelines for historic districts. They recommend against stamped concrete. I know that we've implemented it on vast other parts of our streetscape, but I think at some point we need to do what we did over on North Monroe Street where we just went with all concrete.
Yep.
So my, my thought would be just, just go with concrete. In terms of the, the concept for the, for the Gateway Park, has the Parks and Recreation Commission been involved in reviewing the design? Because they're probably gonna be the ones that have to maintain it, I'm assuming. So have they had input on what's gonna be put in there in terms of a maintenance issue?
Well, the Parks and Recreation Commission has not, because this has sort of developed in the last couple of weeks, but we've had kind of an email group going on, we've reviewed this, Brad Willie, our park supervisor, Loretta LaPointe, our department head, and Annette Knowles, our DDA coordinator, we've all been reviewing this. Now, there may be some tweaks to this. We're, we're not done, and there are little design elements, like where the sprinkler heads are gonna be, things like that, that we still have to address, but we didn't wanna go too far down the road until we got at least some general concept out in front of council, so we made sure that we, we weren't going in fundamentally the wrong direction. So short answer is, it hasn't been fully vetted with the commission yet, but it has with staff. We've been, we've been working collaboratively to come up with something that works. And it can be changed within, in that design lead time window there with MDOT. It's not set in stone, I just have to get something to them for their preliminary review meeting, or else I risk missing the July bid letting, and that, that creates a problem getting the project done this year. So we definitely wanna stay on target for that, with the understanding that this, this will be tweaked over the next few months.
Right, yeah. Real quickly, just the ADA compliance on the curbs there, what kind of additional cost are we looking at?
Not much. The, the main issue, and, and as many people know, I, of course, I lived through it, our litigation with the ADA, they weren't major issues, they were things like the lip was a little bit too high. All of these ramps are dimensionally correct other than that. It's, you can, you have the running slope, you can have the cross slope, it was just curb isn't quite right. And so it'll really just be, at this point, taking out the opening, so the only curve that's gonna come out will be just at the opening, and then recasting that with a, with a flatter lip, and, and then unfortunately, having to regrade the entire corner is the, is the fallout from that. And so because of the condition of the bricks, the unfortunate thing is, they're all, a lot of them are heaved to the point where we probably should do the corners anyway. Just we'd hope, we'd hope they had lasted a little bit longer than this.
Which, now which corner are you talking, are you talking about Monroe and First?
It'd be all four corners at Monroe and First and all four corners at Monroe and Cass.
Okay.
So?
Do you foresee any more problems in the future if we don't get rid of these bricks? That it's just gonna become more of a problem later?
Yeah, I, we, we've seen that at, at the other corners, and that is why, over the last 10, 15 years, we started slowly replacing those corners from the 1982 and 84, the original streetscapes, is because the bricks had gotten that way. And it's, it's a fairly beefy detail, you've got the concrete base underneath it, but once you get water under there, that's what starts to cause it to spall on the top, and they have weep holes in it, water's supposed to pass, but over a 30-year period, they, they start to, that starts to happen. And I think we, we anticipated that would eventually happen here.
And if I may just to add to it, I think that's part of the reason for discussion tonight, is where do we go from here? Because this is not gonna be the last downtown project that we're gonna be confronted with this, and we probably need, certainly with our landscape architect, Russell Design, start thinking in those terms where we go from here, but this is more of an immediate project. And I think, you know, certainly working with Annette and the DDA master plan, we'll probably have some of those design concepts here for the following year going forward, but we, to get the consistency, but it's, it's gonna be ongoing as we, we look at other intersections in downtown.
As we talked over the past weekend, or so, two weekends now, goals and objectives session, downtown maintenance was one of the items that fell into the goals as an objective and how we look at that. I agree with Vince, and I think council has mentioned, when we start, we need to be consistent as we work our way throughout the downtown, so from one end to the other, it is consistent in what that long-term vision. So that's a discussion on a long-term plan of what we're looking for. This obviously has been said as immediate, and I, and I, I'm not sure what the designs or what type of concrete, if it's, I don't say stamped, but something. I know that the, the Gresham Corridor with SEMCOG funding and support, and we talked about that, those corridor plans. I know Mount Clemens had some items in it, I don't think it's stamped concrete, and I'm not saying it is, but how do you make those delineations of where persons walking and what may have some design to it as well, but meet the standards that was mentioned by Councilman Mike Longjly? So there's some others that might be looked at, but I think where we start is where we need to finish when we get through the entire downtown maintenance of the streetscapes and projects, so. If there's no other comments, thank you, Patrick.
Bud? Thank you for your thoughts.
Next item, Mark, do you wanna come up? Just as a brief introduction, just wanted to, in a, probably in past correspondence indicated that ITC is looking at relocating and beefing up some of their high transmission mains that running along East Elm, east of Dixie Highway, and it begged the question, well gee, you know, with what we have going on with the battlefield, could be, be a relocation, and so that may help with the, the view of the battlefield property. So, Mark, I'll let you go through this quickly and...
Yep, real brief update. As Vince mentioned, last year, we were contacted by ITC that they were gonna be rebuilding the cluster transmission line that pretty much runs from their Maple Station out to the, the power plant, the DTE power plant. Right now, the poles, I'll show you the current trail, but it's the, the kind of rickety-looking wooden poles that they have out there now that carry the ITC transmission lines, but also the DTE distribution lines, running to service houses in their proposed, well, they will be, starting, planning this year and beginning construction in early 2019 to replace those poles with these poles, similar to what you see on Stewart Road with, by the Lazy Boy property when they upgraded the transmission line. So you can kinda see what the, the poles are gonna look like. The existing route runs from the Maple Station up Noble, heads south along Dixie Highway, and then heads east at the Dixie Elm interchange, and then runs along the south side of Elm Avenue, along the river, out to the DTE plant. Here you see the green lines are the, the existing ITC lines, and the blue lines are the existing DTE distribution lines that run along Elm Avenue and then also run along south of the River Rays and along Rauk Park. So as Vince mentioned, we kinda took the opportunity, had a conversation with ITC and asked them if this was an opportunity to consider relocating the ITC transmission lines off the viewscape of the battlefield as we look forward to development of the Heritage Corridor. What we have proposed and sent information over to ITC is that the, the new towers would run along the planned rerouted Noble that runs along Dixie Highway, this is kind of a draft map, but it would, instead of heading south along Dixie Highway, it would cross across Dixie Highway and then run along the northern edge of the National Park, across the existing Detroit Avenue, and then pretty much follow the easement that was filed, the highway, highway and utility easement for the rerouted Detroit Avenue, head south at that point, and then continue on out to the DTE plant at that point. So we sent along a lot of information to ITC based on the environmental studies that were completed on the, the former paper mill site, on what due diligence has to be followed when there's any, any work that's done on the former paper mill plants. They have that, they don't think it's gonna be an issue at this point. DTE did talk to us about the, the routing of their distribution lines would continue south along Dixie Highway and cross the river here, and of course, there's still residents and businesses along Elm Avenue at this point... that would still have to have, uh, the distribution lines routed to their properties. But as we move forward with the acquisition project with the DNR, uh, in acquiring the properties along the river, the opportunity for those to go away and then, uh, attached to the bottom of the ITC poles as they are now rerouted to service the, the businesses at this area, becomes likely as well. So, right now, we're kind of just in the discovery phase where ITC is looking at, um, the feasibility of, of rerouting their lines and then also in discussions with DTE about their distribution lines and we're meeting this Friday to talk about it a little more. But, uh, right now, everything seems favorable.
Questions for Mark?
Yeah, just a question, Your Honor. What, what is the possibility of potentially burying the lines?
For the ITC transmission lines, it's expensive, so...
Pipe dream.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unfortunately. For the distribution lines, I think that would be something that we should look at exploring, especially along the Dixie Highway corridor right here. And then looking at how they cross the river, I think would be another opportunity for discussion eventually, too.
Thank you.
What about the alternative of partially burying the lines as they go through the Battlefield site?
For these ones?
No, the green.
The green, up here?
Yeah.
Um, it's not a subject that we broach with them. I don't, I don't know if they can bury the, the huge transmission lines.
What about, I understand that you wanna get them off of Elm Avenue for the, the view shed, but those lines in that location as well is gonna be a visual impact to the National Park.
Yeah.
Uh, what about sending them further to the north and then coming down along the I-75 corridor?
That would probably add extensive costs to their project.
We only have one National Park.
We can ask them when we meet with them this Friday.
Yeah, if I may, um, you know, part of the premise when they, the first conversation we had with them was, uh, this was just as a courtesy, hey, this is what we're doing. And, and I'm looking, well, you know, if we did this, we're not gonna cost you any more money and it would have a big impact on, on the view, uh, there with the, the National Park. But as Mark said, we haven't had any further discussion about, you know, either underground or even moving, moving it further to the east, um, you know, from, uh, where they're at.
And I think part of the discussion that we still need to have with them, too, is where exactly the towers will be located, 'cause with the larger towers that they're proposing to, to install, there's greater distance in between the two as opposed to the smaller wooden towers. So, it may just be lines that you see across here where there may be a pole here and then a pole here, I'm speculating at this point. But that's something we still need to find out, too, is exactly how the view shed would be impacted.
Your Honor, I know that, for example, the Gettysburg National Park will not allow any overhead lines in the National Park area because of the impact it has on the, uh, the visitor experience. These are huge poles and...
They are.
They're, you're gonna, regardless of where they're located, they're gonna have an impact on that National Park. So, I mean, IT, ITC's gotta be somewhat critical of the fact that we have a National Park that they're gonna have a negative impact on.
It's something we'll raise with them.
And then I, I guess my follow-up to that is, you know, you're changing one location for another, it's still gonna be visible and then the DT lines will still be there for a period of time. So, we might have two lines that we're looking at, so it's double up in one location. And I try to think of where, where is it, if, if it comes to be where they could be buried, if there's less poles and stuff, what's, which one of those is, uh, more accommodating or easier to achieve? I don't have that answer, I'm just trying to think it through my head of what we would ask them and what their thoughts and responses would be. Is it detouring and put it in it, or is it keeping it where it is and putting it under? I don't know.
Your Honor.
Both of them have a, uh, I'll just say a negative...
Mark, doesn't, Your Honor, doesn't, Mark, doesn't the National Park eventually, aren't, it's the Homridge property that goes to the north?
It is currently the National Park.
It is? So, this, this line would go, this line would go right through the National Park?
It would go over, yeah.
Yeah. 'Cause that's not the northern boundary of the National Park. The National Park actually goes very, yeah, further to the north. Okay.
Your Honor.
And I did raise a question with, uh, with Mark, as this was coming forward, if we've had conversations with the National Park and the superintendent regarding this proposal, so...
Yeah.
Your Honor, just one other thing, I know that downtown, uh, down by the river especially, we, I know that we have some lines buried down there. I'm not certain what type of lines those are. Uh, maybe we could do some research on that and as a, kind of a, uh, thought for what these could possibly be.
Mm-hmm. We'll broach the subject with them again.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I, I see Clerk Treasurer LaVois moving, 'cause it is seven fifteen, we have the timeframe that we have to get accommodated for the, uh, council agenda meeting. I saw that Mr. Pastu also spoke with one of our next speakers and I'm not sure where we're at and we'll move forward.
Can we, uh, I told, uh, Ms. Egan, if we can do this in, uh, under ten minutes, would that be fine for the council?
Yeah.
Five minutes?
Five minutes? Is that too quick? If not, we could put it on the, I'll ask the council to put it on the regular session.
Fine, we can see what we got and then I think a lot of the folks here have already seen it, probably looked at the website and I've heard feedback from several of you, so I appreciate that. So, let me get in here. Um, we sent out, of course, you know, the, the website launched last week, um, January thirty-first, so, we are very proud to debut it into, to the community. We have been working on this project for over, well over a year. Um, man, that's not a good sign, is it? I forgot, I forgot one W. You need three, three W's to access the website, World Wide Web. So, um, so what we wanted to do with this project, you know, besides improve the website in itself, the accessibility of it, ease of use, we've all heard, I, I know many of you have told me you've heard over the years, some difficulties you've encountered with the website. We wanted to increase, um, ease of use, government transparency, and also, um, support our brand and with a strong presence in design, um, and also a spirit of community engagement. So, I think that's where a lot of our projects are going now. We have a lot of things down, coming down the pike, the brand supports that. We wanna engage with the community and provide this information as easily as possible for them to access and participate with and subscribe to, et cetera. And I think that, um, all of our hard work is, uh, is come to fruition with a, a great design that accomplishes those things. This is, this website is a reactive website, it's adaptive to different mobile devices as well as desktops and different browsers. So, if you pulled it up on your phone, although it will be a more simplified version, it will, you'll still get the same impact. You all recognize probably many of the drone footage. We had created a piece, a marketing piece to introduce our brand about what, what was that, a year ago? No, July, July of last year, um, which kind of capitalized on some of the beautiful natural assets of our community and our downtown and our neighborhoods. Um, and we put that footage to good use here in a, kind of an innovative way. I haven't seen a lot of websites that utilize this technique to provide a community overview because as we know, this website has to function for our citizens as well as those that are looking to visit here and those who invest in our community and also instill civic pride. That was one part of our branding initiative that was very important. So, just really quickly, I know that the time is limited, I'll go over the main navigation features of the site. And, um, I know we talked about this a little bit at the, uh, the Goals and Objectives session, but we have a mega menu at the top. The website navigation was devised to take into consideration the way that different people think about looking for information. So, um, I always point out a couple of different staff members 'cause it always comes up in conversation, but one staff member always goes to search, they just go straight to search, they don't look at anything. I like to use what they call a mega menu, which provides an overview of the site. And some people kinda try and navigate through in, in another way by finding, um, an action verb, and I'll explain that in a second. So, here at the top, we have a, a mega menu which provides an overview in six categories. Um, City Hall, of course, divided into departments, boards, commissions, connect, and a section called Open Government, where we find, um, our Code of Ethics, um, calendars, bids, public records, staff directory, et cetera. The Residence section, um, highlights a lot of our reports that are generated, maps, community assets like libraries and schools, our environmental conservation efforts and resources that people might not think that we have. Um, Airport, we're gonna be getting a port page or redirect to the, the port page as well. And, um, services they may be looking for, like after-hours emergencies. Try and find that contact information on our old website, it was very difficult to navigate. Our Business section is particularly geared towards, of course, those looking to invest in our community. Um, it has a lot of great information, reports and studies and tax incentives, um, that our economic development team put together. So, that's a pretty comprehensive section. Visitors, of course, is kind of a highlight overview of our, um, our history, some of our assets within the community and our recreation offerings. And this section, E-Services, um, is for things you can do online that maybe you didn't know you could do, like pay your taxes or pay your water bill. A lot of people didn't know you could do that, even though I think it says it on the water bill and it's always been on the website, but now it's easy to find. And then we have this other section, this is kind of a new thing that you're gonna see around websites, especially city websites, called I Want To or How Do I? And it pairs a, an action verb with a desired outcome. So, I want to pay. So, they're gonna look for, I wanna pay, or I wanna apply for, I want information about, I want to view. Um, so, all of these links in E-Services, I Want To, Visitors, all of these all go back to, for the most part, department pages. So, they all are just ways to bring information buried in a department page up to the surface so you can find it within the minimal amount of clicks. And of course, we have the traditional search here in the upper right-hand corner. Now, if you scroll down the page at the bottom of this video, you have the top reasons that people come to Monroe, uh, the City of Monroe's website. We can use Google Analytics to find that information. So, they come to look at job openings, agendas, meeting minutes, calendars, um, ordinances, et cetera. So, this is a carousel in the middle of the page that if you're coming, and I know I've already used it several times, I wanna see what the agenda is that Michelle posted, I'm going straight to the page and I click right on the center. I don't have to go digging throughout the site. The calendar also, that's gonna be like a direct link that filters out events and meetings. If we scroll down the page, we have a news brief section on the left. This isn't official press releases per se, but they're highlights on little news bits that come up. So, here, we can feature a graphic image as well as, um, if you click on it, you're taken to kind of an overview of that news article and a way to find more information. Just today, we put up Recreation, had their new, um, Recreation catalog posted, so we put that right up on the site, on the front page. So, it's a way to pull things that are seasonal or timely and put them onto the front of the page. Chief Mack just announced the twenty seventeen Officer of the Year. As soon as he sent that out, I was able to put that on the front page of the site. Um, we didn't necessarily have to wait for official press release, but those are some things that are small things that are happening within the city that we can put up there, including event collaborations. So, if we're a partner on an event, we can put that up as well. Um, winter taxes due, um, and we're closed for President's Day. This calendar on the right is gonna link to a bigger calendar, but it's gonna, on the front page, filter out events and meetings. So, you can just go straight to meetings and kinda see what's coming up, but if there was a city event, like the River Rays and Legacy or the River Rays and Battlefield, if they have an event or, or something we're partnering on, we can post that there. At the bottom of the right is our Facebook feed, a live Facebook feed on everything that we post on the city's official page. And on the left-hand side are more seasonal announcements that may not be news brief-worthy but are still important, like our snow policies. People wanna know why their street didn't get plowed, it's gonna be right on the front page. They can click right there and see that it's there. When it's fall, if we do, you know, leafbag distribution, that could be there. If we go into, and I know I'm trying to go quickly, if we go right into really quickly the department pages, and I'm gonna use fire as an example of this. Department pages have their own customized imagery and one thing I should say is that I took great care to select images that were high-impact. Most of them, um, we had on file that either I took or we had a, a great photographer that Barry hired for the River Rays and Legacy project. Um, so, we picked shots that were appropriate for each department to kind of feature aspects of the community and draw attention to our, um, how beautiful the community is, which we sometimes don't take, we take, we do take for granted. So, the department pages have an introduction to the department. They have a similar layout, so there's some consistency between how you can navigate within the department pages. On the left-hand side are kind of their top sub-pages, so to speak. Their contact information is here on the right. And then, in the middle, they also have a carousel for what are the top things you may come to the fire department for to look for information. So, if you look here, there's Programs. If you go to the Programs page, you're gonna find information on child seat safety inspections, um, CPR and AED training. This is an accordion feature that allows you to not have a whole wall of text page, their File of Life program. So, here's their program information, but if we go back to their homepage, if we look in the center of this carousel, some of those top hits are right here. So, we don't have to go all the way to Programs page. We can see for Parks and Rec, for example, they just put out their program brochure, that link is right there on the dead center of the page. They also have their own social media, the fire department, as well as Recreation. Um, so, we can direct link a department's social media feed to their department homepage. And I know some of our departments are gonna be getting their own calendar feeds, um, which is a Google Calendar. So, Recreation, for example, they're interested in having their own calendar feed. So, you will see Recreation deadlines on the Recreation Department page. We'll replace this general city calendar with those other department-specific. So, when we get up here in the upper right, there's another navigation element. So, you know, we have this, there's a lot of ways to find information on these pages and they're all gonna take you to the same, kinda same core areas. We also have this, more fire links, and it's like that on every page, more clerk links, more police links. Am I going over time? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have five minutes. So, my, my, my thought is, you're gonna be coming back, uh, whether it be tonight or another evening, because I think we'd really like to have another view of this.
I'm sorry. There's so much to talk about with it.
No, this is great information. What's wonderful, and you've just touched on one department, but you, you, there's many informations on many of the departments and the, the fact that we have the, that've launched this is just wonderful, I wanna commend you for that, so...
I led you astray, it was more than five minutes.
That's good.
Sorry, I lose track of time. One thing I'll say really quick to wrap it up, we'll be coming back before the end of the month. We have a couple of web policies to bring before you. One of them is in accessibility. Here at the bottom, you can see accessibility, privacy, and terms of use. That's a web policy. Basically, it says, you know, what kind of information we're gonna share on our site, that it's accessible and ADA compliant, and what are the use, uh, terms of use that, and that'll be in one document that we'll present to you at the end of the month for consideration, so, sorry.
Sorry to cut your time short.
Sorry to drag it on.
Well, you're gonna be back, I know that for sure, so...